Good morning, and welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Monday, July twenty-seventh, and it's ten a.m. And we're here for our regular meeting. All members of the court are present, and the meeting will come to order. Everybody will please rise for the invocation by Pastor Byron Sanford with Greg Bird Baptist Church in Sour Lake. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for some reminders of how awesome and how big you are as I pondered pictures that were sent to me of how big this universe is. Thank you for that reminder of how small I am. Toward that end, Lord, we beckon you that your presence will be with those who govern and making decisions for this county. We also, Lord, I also particularly thank you for their concern that indeed we need you. We need your wisdom. We desire your presence in our courthouses, in our classrooms, and particularly our homes. And, Lord, we ask, despite the decisions that are adverse to your ways, we ask for your healing and forgiveness. And, Lord, we ask that we not turn our backs on those who went and sacrificed their lives, that we may have the freedoms that we have. Help us always to remember that we are your servants, and help us to serve you with gladness and with honor. And we give you the praise and the glory in advance, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Release him from the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four, Glenda Austin, County Clerk, approval of minutes of prior meetings. Ms. Austin?
That would be minutes of the regular meeting on July the thirteenth, budget workshop on July the thirteenth and the twenty-third.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, presentation and approval of registered claims to be canceled by court. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of eight hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars and five cents. There was, these were the vouchers that were presented in the last Commissioners Court on July thirteenth.
I move second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion?
Debbie, did you give us a report?
I, we're emailing them.
Okay, but we don't have the, the one that the judge has.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
If not, it's coming to you to be signed.
Yes.
That's it.
All right. Any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, of Deborah McWilliams, presentation and approval of cash statement.
In the general checking account, we have nine hundred ten thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-two cents. In our investment account at Wells Fargo, we have five million, one hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. In our tax pool general account, we have three million, five hundred thousand, two hundred six dollars and seventy-one cents for a total cash funds of nine million, five hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and two cents.
Ms. McWilliams, you had brought it to our attention the other day that we were getting close to the dollar amount that we have to worry about with Wells Fargo. Did you talk to them about that?
I did send an email to Josh when I left here that day telling him that we would have to really watch accounts closely, that we were going into our lean time, and that we would do our best to maintain. And I haven't heard back from him. This morning I checked all funds. We have eight point eight million, so we're, we'll stay on track and I'll watch it close. And with the court's permission to move the tax pool over, we'll try.
Yes, ma'am.
As soon as I hear from him, I wish I'd known what he said.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I may well approve the cash statement.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, Deborah McWilliams, permission to open bank account for Glenda Austin, County Clerk, registry of. This is, this is to open a new account to move it from the old bank to the new bank? Is that what this is?
Yeah, to try to help her get her registry.
Yeah, we get registry, we get like in probates and, you know, different things. So we have.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Debbie. Item number eight, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures and transfers for July the fourteenth through the fifteenth of two thousand fifteen were thirty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. The pre-approved expenditures for July the twenty-first through July the twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, were twenty thousand, two hundred dollars and three cents. And today, July the twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, the expenditures for Commissioners Court were four hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. The total expenditures and transfers was four hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. The gross payroll for July the seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, was sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. FICA was one thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Retirement was two thousand, four hundred and five dollars and fourteen cents. Total transfer for July the seventeenth, two thousand fifteen payroll was twenty thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and ten cents. The gross payroll for July the twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, was four hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety cents. FICA was thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Retirement was fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents. The total transfer for July the twenty-third, two thousand fifteen payroll was five hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Make a motion for fire, Bill.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, Angela Gore, authorization for county judge to sign engagement letter with Hereford, Lynch, Sellers, and Kirkham for outside audit for year ended September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Item number ten, Constable Tim Moody, precinct six, approval of appointment of Ross Jordan as deputy constable.
I so moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number eleven, Dana Hall, District Clerk, introduction of new deputy clerk, Karen Darby. Good morning, Dana.
Good morning. This is Karen Darby, and she's a new deputy, and we are very pleased that she's here.
Yes, we are. Welcome to Hardin County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Constable Moody, we've already taken care of your line item, and it passed unanimously. Did you have anything you wanted to say about that?
Uh, thank you.
Okay. Item number twelve, Commissioner Kirkendall, precinct two, introduction of new operator, Russell Morgan.
Rust, if you would, stand up. Rust has come to us with a lot of experience, and it's been a joy so far to see him on board and working hard. And he comes to work clean, and he leaves dirty, so that makes us all happy. And he's willing to tackle just about anything, so if y'all see him around, just make sure you pat him on the back, because they're out there working in a hundred-plus degree heat. So, thank you, Russ. Appreciate you.
Welcome.
Would you like to make a speech? You can go ahead and make one.
All right. Item number twelve is Commissioner Kirkendall, I'm sorry, item number thirteen, Commissioner Kirkendall, recognition of Dalton Morrow for ten years of dedicated service to the citizens of Hardin County as a foreman for precinct two and wishing him well on his retirement.
Well, there's not enough words to say about Dalton. He's done a great job. It's been a pleasure, my five years of working with him. And so I've already told him he can't be replaced, his skill sets can't be replaced, but all around, even beyond his knowledge and what he knows, he's a great, he's a great individual. And so the county's going to be at a loss to see him retire, but he has been getting his fishing camp ready. And so I know he's excited to go fishing with his grandson.
That's what we're ready to do.
Dalton, I appreciate all your hard work.
Didn't break, did it?
No.
Dalton didn't want to make a speech?
No. Thursday will be his last day, so Judge, if you need anything between now and Thursday, just call him.
Catch him, catch him before he goes.
Better make a wish, you go Thursday. That was good.
Item number fourteen, Sheriff Ed Kane, recognizing William Gillie for ten years of dedicated service to the citizens of Hardin County as a deputy sheriff and wishing him well on his retirement. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Well, Mr. Gillie retired from City of Sillsby as everything from a patrolman all the way up to the chief of police. And then he, he didn't like all the duties that Susan was giving him at home, so he came back to work for the sheriff's office and worked a couple of years in the jail. And then the last little over eight years, he's been out to school as a school resource officer with the Sillsby Independent School District. He has faithfully served both the county and the school district as a deputy sheriff. And he has chose to retire again, and told me this morning that after this weekend, he told Susan he may go back to work somewhere because he's working too hard. But I'd like to give you a ten-year service award with the county. This is a diamond watch here.
Congratulations, brother.
Don't get me started, I wouldn't shut up.
Item number fifteen, Sheriff Ed Kane, presentation of quarterly crime stoppers, I'm sorry, crime and statistics report.
We're a little late coming in here with this quarter, but let me catch you up to date real quick. We have had a total of a hundred and thirty-four UCR crimes this quarter. This covers April, May, and June. No murders. We reported one rape. We cleared two. The way that happens is we've cleared one from the past during this quarter. We've had no, no armed robberies. We've had a total of fifty-five assaults. We cleared forty-nine of them. Twenty-seven burglaries, we've cleared ten of them. Forty-four thefts, we've cleared sixteen of them, which is not bad, because theft's the hardest thing in the world to clear. We have a, seven vehicles stolen, cleared all seven of those. A total of sixty-two point seven percent overall clearance rate. The national average on property crimes is sixteen percent, and the state average is nineteen percent. Ours is forty-three percent clearance rate. And the violent crimes, the state average, I'm sorry, the national average is forty-seven percent. We have a ninety-one percent clearance rate there. So, again, our, our guys do an outstanding job at clearing cases. We've had a total of four thousand, two hundred and eight calls for service during those three months. A total, that's just for us, a total overall calls for service with all the departments and agencies throughout our county is twelve thousand, eighty-six in those three months. But remember, that's what the dispatch is getting, total calls for service. The, that's the good news. The bad news is our simple assaults is up. Our sexual assaults are up. That makes it sound real bad. We had two last year, and we've had a total of six this year so far. So it's, the number sounds up, but it was four more than we've had last year. And our burglaries are up just a little. So we have a total of fraud is ninety-one point seven percent increase. Fraud is all the scams that are going on. So we're getting more and more of those reported. We've tried to get out to the public to, the best way to say that is anything that sounds good over the phone or in the mail is too good to be true. It is too, too good to be true. Don't do it. Don't give information. We've tried to put that out there, and, and sometimes these people find other ways to get our money. The other thing that's kind of on the increase is weapon law violations, and it's up sixty-six percent. There again, from three last year to five this year. Sounds real bad, it's not, but it's sixty-six percent increase. And we're probably going to see a little more of that when the open carry law actually starts, where you can openly carry the gun on your, wear it on your side. Because we're going to see some people probably do that without the permit, and that's going to be a weapon law violation as well.
Does that take effect on September first?
Yes, sir, it does. And so that's, that's going to be an interesting thing. We'll see how that goes. So, good news is we're clearing cases that we've got. Bad news is we do have a little increase. The driving force of all of that, obviously, is drugs. Drugs will always be the driving force of theft and burglary. So it's just one of those things we'll continue to battle. Overall, the biggest, big picture looks pretty good for Hardin County. When you consider the surrounding counties around us and the problems they're having. Yes, sir?
Sure, just for the clarification of the public, I've talked to some people. They're under the belief that the legislature approved open carry, and you don't have to have a concealed permit, but you still have to have a concealed permit.
Yes, you do.
In order.
You will still have to have.
Carry a firearm.
They, they just take the word concealed out. You still have to have a carry permit.
Carry permit.
And then, of course, we'll go into this more as it comes, but the, the open carry means you have to wear it in a holster on your side, just as we do, or in a shoulder holster. It can't be stuck in your pants or something like that. It has to be in a holster. When legislators are making laws, you got to remember.
Right. You got to wonder what's going on.
But anyone that has a concealed carry permit today on September first can open carry.
That's correct.
And then they can apply for a carry permit.
And then, of course, businesses, private businesses, courthouses, places of government and all, those laws are still in effect to where you can't carry them in certain places automatically, and businesses still have the right to keep you out, but they have to do some. There's some language in the laws that says a certain wording has to be on the door, it's certain size letters, and all this kind of stuff. It's going to be interesting, we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting.
Yeah. All right. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Item number sixteen, Shirley Stevens, tax assessor-collector, introduction of new deputy clerk, Scott Rodriguez. Good morning.
Good morning. Now, I'm not sure if Scott was ready for this or not, but I have hired Scott in the tax office. It is no longer just tax office ladies. It's tax office ladies and Scott. I would like to say that in the short time that he has been here, he has really shone an aptitude for his job. And I think he's going to be a wonderful asset to the tax office. And so this is Scott Rodriguez.
Now, does, have you taught Scott the emergency word for pushing the button in there?
No, we have not told him.
Well, we won't say it in here, but.
We won't say it in here.
I was just wondering if he knew it yet.
Yeah. Well, I have to tell you what the secret word is. I guarantee you.
Welcome to Hardin County.
Thank you, Dana. Good to be here.
I'm very proud to have him.
Number seventeen, Shirley Stevens, discussion and action regarding the twenty-fourteen tax collections.
Okay. This is tax collections from October through June, and I believe I've given all of you a percentage of collections on the front page. We have collected ninety, oh, point nine five one percent of the current, point oh two three three percent of the delinquent tax collections, which has given us point nine seven four three for the current and the delinquents. If you add in the penalty and interest of point oh one three six, comes to total collections of point nine eight seven nine. And I put a comparison sheet in there for you from last year, and we were up just a tad. The collections were up this time compared to last year. So I'm pleased with that. Now, if you will look on the long sheet, these figures have gone to the delinquent tax roll. The two thousand and fourteen delinquent tax roll for each entity. And if you will look, Hardin County's amount, and that will be on that front page also. Okay, the delinquent roll for Hardin County, that's just the, what went delinquent July first, is seven hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-six cents, which gives us a total of delinquent tax, two million, six seventy-seven, six fifty-three, and seventy-nine cents. And now the long sheet will need to be signed by the court for me to put into the records today. Do any of you have any questions?
The two million number that you quoted?
Yes.
That's just for the county total?
That is just for the county.
So, that's after the seven seventy-two's been added?
Uh, no. Not yet. Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. Uh-huh. If you will look on the, and I, second page, the third page there, it'll give you that amount. Two, two million, six seventy-seven, six fifty-three, seventy-nine. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I will report that McCreary is doing an excellent job in filing lawsuits and attempting to collect these taxes. We've already sent out two delinquent letters this year that have brought a great response. And so McCreary is certainly working towards collecting these delinquent taxes for us. Okay?
I would move that we certify.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Item number eighteen, adoption of resolution number twenty-one dash fifteen, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Enhancement Fund. This is for the, this is the grant application we approved a while back for the annex building, is that correct?
Okay.
This is for the grant application that we approved a few weeks ago for the, I want to say it's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant application for the annex building.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nineteen, authorization for county judge to sign interlocal agreement with Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission for operation of a regional nine-one-one system. This is a renewal of the interlocal agreement that we have with the nine-one-one, and there are no changes other than the dates.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty, Commissioner Cooper, precinct one, review preliminary drawings and schematic floor plan of courthouse annex building provided by the LaBeach Architectural Group on July twenty-first, two thousand fifteen.
Uh, we received this from our architect, LaBeach, last week. The status that we're at right now is sometimes, and in the near future, we'll be setting public hearings up throughout the county. Sillsby, Coontz, Sour Lake. I think the judge and Mr. Pelt have even mentioned the possibility of going to Saratoga. There'll be a copy of these plans on file at each one of these locations that we have our public hearings, and will be left there for the public to look at. And I'm going to pass these around today if no one in the audience has seen these, but I'll pass these around. Uh, this is just preliminary plans, floor plans. Everything is based on the meeting between the architect and our department heads that are currently over there to come up with square footage and drawings on, on the proposed annex building. After we, after commissioners meet with the public, it'll be determined on what route we will go to finance this, this building, whether we go certificates of obligation, have a bond election, or pay for out of contingency, I believe, is our, our three options. It appears, of course, we as commissioners want to hear what, what our public has to say about it, but it appears that the consensus of the court is to go certificates of obligation, and, but we'll make that determination after our public hearings with all the, the different cities. Uh, does anybody have any questions? Any other court?
Other than, I just wanted to add to this, that the locations that we're looking to have the, the public workshops are in Coontz. Of course, we'll have it here in the county courtroom. In Lomerton, we would have it either in the Tress Center or the Performing Arts Auditor, not the auditorium, but the foyer there will hold a couple hundred people, I believe. Uh, in Sillsby, I was thinking about the community center. Uh, in Sour Lake, also the community center, and then in Saratoga at the Fire Hall. Does everybody, sounds, that sound okay with everyone? And then if we don't have any changes to the drawings, I'd like to ask LaBeach to go ahead and have something a little better detail and make it a little larger so we can display that for the public. I'd like to get five sets so we can leave them at each of these locations after we leave. They can be there for the public to see, in case they can't come on the evening that we have the workshop. They can go by there and see it anytime. And the, the next thing is I'd like to get these set up fairly soon. I'd like to really have them all finished by the middle of August, if we could work that out. Does anybody's schedules not allow for that? And we would also have the department heads from the annex come to some of those as well, whatever they're able to come to. And if there's any further input, I'm open to that as well. Okay? And I will get to work on setting these dates, and I'll get with y'all and let you know when those are, and then if, once everything's, once everyone says they're good with it, then we'll set it firm and start announcing it and getting it in the newspapers.
We have the land cleared. Uh, the next step is, I think the landowner wanted some of those bricks that come out of the chimney.
Yes, sir.
Once that's taken care of, we'll get that cleared, and we'll have the debris removed, and then we'll be ready to go, so.
And I left a message for Ms. Richardson this morning to find out if she could, if she still wanted the brick, and if she does, I'd, we'd like to try to get that picked up this week. If not, then we'll, we'll find somebody to take it, I'm sure.
And I believe that was covered in the agreement that we, the sale agreement.
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah, so we're not giving away cash.
No, sir.
It was in the deal.
Yes, sir. All right. Anything further? All right. If not, we'll move on to item number twenty-one. Commissioner Kirkendall, permission to solicit bids for overlaying approximately one point two miles on Cravens Camp Road.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-two, discussion and action regarding relocation of the Health Department and Crime Victims Assistance Center, excuse me, to the Williford Center located at three sixty South Pan Street, suites three and four in Coontz. Misty, did, were you able to obtain a budgetary figure for what it would cost to move those two departments? Do you think it would cost more than ten thousand dollars? Going to have to move all the telephones, the computers, furniture, and people? I would ask the court to authorize up to ten thousand dollars to move those two departments, and then we'll also need authorization of the monthly rent, which is six hundred dollars per suite.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? And if it looks like we're going to exceed that amount, I'll come back to court and ask for more.
Is that coming from contingency?
If they don't have it in their budgets, then we'll have to bring it out of contingency, and I don't think they do. So, yes, ma'am. Uh, did you, did you ask for a vote, Dan? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number twenty-three, Joseph Singletary, AgriLife Extension Agent, discussion and adoption of revised description for the first assistant position in the Extension Office. Good morning, Mr. Singletary.
Good morning. The copies y'all have, the first one is highlighted to, to indicate the changes being made. Uh, the second one is what it would be printed up as if, if somebody was applying to the position. The changes, the reason for the changes is to more accurately reflect the first assistant position. There's some, some added language in there about being in contact with volunteers and, and the like, and then making some, some of the four-H meetings if necessary. But it's nothing that, that Ms. Tammy here hasn't already been doing, so she's, she's, she's the one that kind of pushed for the changes anyway, so. But if she ever does leave, it would more accurately reflect the kind of person needing to be hired for that position.
Speaking of leaving, is there anybody in your department that's leaving soon?
Yes, sir. I am going to be leaving. Uh, August twelfth is going to be my last day as the county extension agent. Uh, they have my, have had my job posted since July nine, or my position, and I haven't heard yet if there's been any applicants or not. It has been a pleasure working for Hardin County, and I'm not leaving Hardin County. I'm going to, I accepted a teaching position at Sillsby High School. Biology is all I've been told at the moment, so I'll be teaching all the freshmen coming in next year.
Oh, bless your heart.
Well, I'm hoping my, my demeanor is intimidating enough that I don't have too much pride.
Right, right.
But it has been a pleasure working for Hardin County, and it wasn't an easy decision to make, but I feel it was the right decision for, for me personally to make. Uh, I am going to miss working with all of y'all, working with the people of Hardin County, but there again, I'm not leaving, I'm just moving.
With Joseph on behalf of the court, I want to tell you that you'll be missed, and you'll be hard to replace, and we appreciate the job that you've done for Hardin County. And good luck to you in your future endeavors. And good luck to you in your future endeavors.
We had, we had just agreed if you stayed, that twenty-five percent increase.
I know, I know, that's all. You would just put that back into the calendar for me.
I move we adopt the revised job description presented by Joseph Singletary.
Second.
Have a motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-four, Debbie Mendes Sable, Human Resources Clerk, discussion and approval to change the job title of administrative technician to administrative assistant in the county judge's office. The only change there is the name. The job duty stays the same.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-five, Commissioner Pelt, precinct three, Ann Angela Gore, acceptance of Hardin County Emergency Services District number three audited financial statement for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Angela, you reviewed that?
I have reviewed it and I recommend we accept it at this time.
Alright, thank you ma'am. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-six, Commissioner, Commissioner Kirkendall and Angela Gore, acceptance of Hardin County Emergency Services District number eight compiled financial statement for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. Angela, you reviewed this one as well?
Yes, yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. I just would like to add that we also received the audited financial statement from Hardin County ESD number one, but we failed to put that on the agenda, so that will be on the August tenth agenda, and we received that last Tuesday, I believe. We just left it off. All in favor of the motions?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-seven, Chief Kevin Cummings, Adult Probation Department, notice of open meeting to discuss Hardin County CSCD budget for fiscal year two thousand sixteen on August thirteenth, two thousand fifteen at eleven thirty AM.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-eight, Esther Scarborough, Flood Plane Administrator, discussion and action regarding approval of final lease agreement for the purpose of leasing aircraft hangar space at the Hawthorne Field. I move that we table this item, it's not ready.
Sir.
Have a motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Pelt to table item number twenty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-nine, Misty Whitney, purchasing agent, permission to solicit bids for overlaying various repair spots with two-inch compacted overlay on Cravens Camp Road.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Does anybody need a break before we start number thirty?
I do.
Let's take a short break.